My home made me work, you got it for me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America. To your republic, our borders, one nation, and my God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Don't be far, thank you for a beautiful day and just be with the people that are in the panhandle dealing with the fires and just comfort them as long as you can. Have your hand protection over that situation. Just be with all the people that are up there fighting that and volunteering and just thanks for them. Thanks for all the blessings you've given us and just if it's in your will, just please send some rain on our way. Thank you for your son Jesus in his name we pray.
First thing we talk about is the intensive effort in talking to the president and President John Kerry.
Alrighty, while I'm looking this information up, I've invited Mr. Bobby Phillips to join us today. Not to give presentations too much, but more to answer any questions that you guys may have about the situation we're in. While I'm looking this up, you guys, y'all should have a copy of this. I emailed this to y'all before. So y'all seen it and you know what the situation.
You guys question during the time of the email?
Sure.
I think my main question is, I don't understand how something like that gets overlooked. I mean, I'm building the house right now and this is very generic, but something that you go over that has everything. Lodge preparation, sanding field, foundation, sheetrock labor lumber, look down here, installation. And it's got bid sheet of what the estimated cost is and then what the actual cost is, distribution comments, check date, all those things. And I can't imagine, this is a very small scale of build. I cannot imagine that there's not some kind of checks and balances. Or is this kind of an oversight? That we just miss out on? And then there, I guess there's a couple of things that bother me about it. Number one, if I understand it correct, it's kind of like y'all are a company, but we're still the general contractor. I don't really know how that works. It's like more, I guess y'all are more of like a management company and we're like the contractor, the G C. Where these problems kind of become ours, but I think like one thing I want to note is, and maybe we've addressed this, but just refresh my memory, are y'all compensated by percentage?
No.
It's a set fee?
It's a black fee, no matter what.
No matter what, like it's like y'all go out and give bids for us, it's not a, it's not fifteen percent off of like that.
It's a, it's a black fee. We don't, it's paid. We can, we are hired as a fiduciary to try to be as responsible for your money as can be. Just taking our knowledge, excuse me, I'm still a little hoarse, but taking our knowledge and using that to manage that project. And so we're a fiduciary for your money, so therefore we don't participate in any changes. The only way that we may have changed is if you decided, okay, I'm gonna add another wing out there. So then you've changed the stove, then we would have some kind of fee associated.
So then y'all's fee is based off of a monthly, like as long as we're retaining your services, then that's how you get compensated. Like if we say, okay, well, you know what, this isn't really working out, we're gonna take it here, y'all's minimum fee goes away. Is that, is that what I'm hearing? You say like it's basically a month to month draw of some sort or you're being a liaison?
So we have a contract with the school district, just like everybody else does, right? Similar to what the architect does, except the architect is, he's got a percentage based on what the job cost is, right? Where we don't, so we're doing the job based off of whatever, same fee was a hundred thousand dollars, right? So what we typically do is we think, okay, this is gonna take six months to do, we just take that hundred thousand dollars. Usually we, uh, there's probably some insurances, you say, you know, relatively upfront. And the rest of it is all just divided by however many months we think it's gonna take.
So whose problem is this? Understanding the architect, which I don't really like the fact that architect companies getting compensated on a cost basis, cost plus. I don't like that because they can go out and, and overbuild something and then their percentages increase.
Sure.
You know, so I don't really like that and I didn't, I didn't have knowledge of that, but because there's some things that I think are over, overdone.
Yeah.
For sure, there, I've walked through and seen things and I'm like, that's way overdone. And that makes sense. I figured somebody was getting the cost plus. I didn't know if it was your company or who that was, but that makes sense. It's architect company. Who's responsible, who, who, who is the checks and balances on kind of oversight?
So the process, the architect sits in meetings with the guy or with whoever from the school district. Gets the ideas of what the school district is looking for, that kind of thing. And then they go back and they start drawing based off of that. They bring on their consultants to like their mechanical, electrical plumbing, those gas structural, civil. They bring those guys on board to start doing the design work. And then there's progress drawings that come up through as we, as we go along. Typically, we will start putting some budget numbers together to those things, say at fifty percent of SD drawings, I'll call them. And then they, design and development drawing, the rest went out there, there's multiple estimates that get put together. When they get a bid set of documents ready to go, they've got the plans, they've got the specifications. We take those specifications, we go through those, list them all out, we take the plans, we go through those plans page by page. Noting anything that we see discrepancy wise and things. So there's that portion of the vetting of what the drawings show. And then as we get those final plans and the job is bid, then we have trades that come on and they do some more of that kind of, same kind of stuff. If you remember, this thing was crazy over budget initially. And so then we had to go back and start saying, okay, what do we do to try and get this cost down where it, where it can be built? They get a whole lot of help out of the architect in that situation.
I know, cause you're picking his bottom line.
True, that's true. Got no help out of the civil side of things, which I know you guys have seen the result of that. They wanted to charge more money to design it after the fact. We finally got them drawings, by the way, last week, maybe the, maybe the end of the following week or previous week. We're still vetting, looking through those drawings, but it looks like they've added some stuff in there that necessarily sure why it's added. So we got a list of questions being developed for that. But anyway, we do our best to flip through these drawings, look for the issues that may arise. Bring them up to the architect prior to bid. We had, I don't know how many items that we submitted to the architect for review prior to bid to make some estimates on. Some of those were made, some were not. We tried to compensate for some of those. I can tell you, this job has more contingency in it than we would normally put in it. And the reason for that is we built the ag block with this same roof. So we kind of hedged our bet on that. That's why we still have, like it's close to a million dollars in construction contingency and two fifty or something like that in the owner contingency. So we try to compensate for the shortcomings that we know were there. At least in this case, we don't always know, but in this case we did. And then point out anything that we find as we go through. Usually a roof like that, it's designed, the insulation is designed on top of the decking, under the roofing. As a rigid insulation or.
It's a foam.
A foam insulation, that's correct. Normally, it's not on this one.
But I guess what I'm asking is they didn't have it, the architect company didn't have it in the plans to catch, is basically what it comes down to.
Yes.
Or did we have it in there and then they made that?
They changed it when they.
That's a question that I'd like.
Yeah, it was never in there.
It was never.
It's not on any of the plans saying what the insulation is. There is a com check. And what a com check is, during the architect's design, he sends it out to a third party reviewer to review ADA and energy inspection stuff. And then he gets a sheet back. There's a copy of that that calls out insulation where it should be. But he never made the change from that com check to the plans. The architect never made the change from that to the plans, either by being nowhere in the front end. So.
Is that where we're getting where what I was told in our construction meeting that is there, but it was never specified as to the contract included?
That's right. It's in, it's in the com check, which is the stuff that goes to the architect so he can adjust his things up or down, whatever, add notes or whatever the case may be.
That the insulation was in the very first set of plans that y'all revised, so it's never been an even plan?
Never been an even plan. Now, there's insulation in the roof everywhere else. All the flat roof has insulation in it.
Like on the GM?
On the GM, yes, sir.
Because they're building the grade into it, right?
Cause that would. Yeah, part of that is for the slope.
Right.
Now that, that GM, you can see it slopes anyway. It's pretty obvious when you're standing there looking at the ductwork, that whole, that whole thing slopes to the north.
I, I think the thing that worried or that bothers me is two things actually. One, that we've been through this, we're fifty percent done. And, and two, what's confusing is, I mean, I'm a spray foam guy. I like it. I get in my house for most of people and I sell traditional bat insulation, but if people have the option, I would definitely, you should get spray foam. If you had some rigidity, some integrity by having it kind of glued together in a sense.
Right.
But and it's also the factor is great. So the other side of that is when I read that email, I don't understand the timeline. It's like a spray foam, which is twice the cost, twice the experience, is half the timeline. I could get a truckload of bat insulation tomorrow if I wanted it. I love it, Texas, from Guardian Building Drive, probably. I've got to count it. How is there that big of a deficit? It, to me, it seems like somebody's pushing, let's just, uh, let's go with the more expensive option. Rather than saying, how is that? I don't understand. Like I understand the deficit and the, the cost of the insulation. I don't understand the lead time being doubled because I'm not, I'm not blowing smoke when I say that. I mean, there's no way you can tell me that I can get it being a little po dunk, but then nobody else can get that?
I don't know that it's necessarily getting of the material. I don't have a breakdown of what their two months or three months or whatever it was, is. Like, uh, but the big part of that, uh, using the bat and the chicken wire, as you probably know, takes longer to do.
Sure.
And you're in there to brown the walls that are in there, uh, ice cream units that are already hung.
That's what I'm saying. I feel pressured to make the decision of going spray foam because it just feeds everything up. I think they're blaming it on a timeline because of the labor intensive part of that. I have a hard time believing a timeline is doubled with traditional bats or the chicken, I mean, no, it's not traditional necessarily, but conventional type insulation versus a spray foam insulation. I feel like somebody's blowing smoke saying, hey, we need to count it, let them say, hey, this is the better option. Obviously, we're up against the wall here. And if we're gonna try to meet our deadline moving in in August, we better go with the ones which helps to speed up that, speed up that timeline.
True. So based off of what you just said, because I thought the same thing, why does that take so much longer to do or have to price twice the lead to time, right? So I called another spray foam contractor who actually said that he thinks he could do that whole roof in about four days and he would be probably two weeks out. So send him this up, so he's putting the number together. And what he's talking about, square foot dollar wise? And this is all stuff that just happened today. When I got here, I was actually talking to the guys and that's how I found out this other spray foam guy. But I think he's gonna be cheaper and quicker. My recommendation to you guys, and I know you have angst about it all. We have the money in there in the, in the expediting allowance that we've got. My recommendation would be for us to say, okay, we're gonna approve spending up to ninety eight thousand, which I think that was the spray foam number, right? And give us the opportunity to see if we can make that number go down, because I think we can. Or whatever, whatever the cost is, is what the cost is. Again, we don't just pay. It's about, yeah, yeah.
But the price on it, I mean, I know it costs, it's, it's a lot better, a lot better option.
It is.
But I understand it's bright and sunlit. How do we, how do you get to this point? Oh, wow, we've got to put this a lot. Nobody's even figured it out.
Well, so.
It's something different though, because it's not the first time that somebody's been there.
No, it's, I agree.
Like we put the wrong metal up here.
But you know, I'm the same way. Like I built that house and. Like, no, you better kind of, because, and that's how I feel too, you know, in a sense. Because that, that's their one job, to make sure, you know.
And that's probably my, I have a couple like a timeline. Y'all were talking around seventy five thousand dollars is what we were told. They said, that's kind of what we're looking at and stuff. We're gonna get the figures together and stuff.
Yeah.
They've never brought any figures back in here. They have never come back to us that I've said.
Around the tennis court?
Yes.
Cause we just got the design with those civil companies and the design is awful. So what we've done is gone to the concrete man, told him to build us, price us a wall in there. That's, that's what he's doing right now.
I, I can't second that. I know in the last construction meeting I was part of, they were wanting to fill it out of his, I call them landscaped blocks. Problem with that was as the stack that overlap one another, for the height of that wall, it would eat up much of that dry up in the building, the tennis court. So they, they. Probably not room in there. Concrete brick wall to save as much space as it could.
Let's, let's start with the building's option.
Yeah. Well, and then another thing too is, it kind of, all those things concern me that people have mentioned and the fact that it's like, oh, we haven't spent this money that we had set back in case we needed it, but that's something, it's almost like, it's not, that's not real money. That's, that's, you know, it was just there. I mean, what if, what if it wasn't there? How many times are we gonna come in here and, and it'd be like, oh, it's a hundred thousand, it's a hundred and fifty thousand, seventy five thousand.
And we have to answer to the community that we begged for this and trust us, trust us, trust us.
So the budget that was set and approved at the school board meeting has all of those, has all those numbers in it. I almost want to say, there's no way you can spend more than what you've got there. Who knows?
Well, there's also no way we're gonna spend less with architects and being on a cost plus scale. People will come in under that. And when I build a house, the whole reason I have that estimate is because I'm trying to see, hey, let me show you how much I saved you.
Right.
Based off the bid sheet, you know, because what you have to do, I appreciate the people for another company to do this. But the only thing you can gain from this is your reputation. And you want us to go to these other communities and say, hey, man, you know what? They're a good group of guys to work with. Um, you know, the due diligence and seeking out and finding these other things. But I mean, at the same time, it's like, it's kind of like, I appreciate you doing that. But we shouldn't even make these decisions under the gun because of oversight by your company. You know what I mean? I say, I'm not holding you responsible. What I'm saying, the company that you're employed by is responsible for check balances of the architect's design and saying, hey, we vetted this, we went through it, looks good. Hey, man, what about insulation? Not whenever we're ready to put insulation in. It's like, well, where's that? Now, a truckload of insulation?
There is insulation and there's roof insulation.
Sure, but you know what I'm.
Those guys are putting this, all this stuff together. And I'm not taking up for them because I graph about estimating departments all the time. Promise you I do. They're doing the best job they can do with what they have. And do they miss stuff? Yes.
I get it. It's not, it's not about, you know, but this isn't, this isn't like you're dealing with individually. You're, you're dealing with the institution from ever since the community. And so that's a different animal and that's the game that y'all are in, which is where you have that responsibility to make sure that you hold your, up your end of the bargain for the institution that is funded by community. And so that needs to be checks and balances. I don't care if you set up a whole department, did they do nothing to go with this, you know? But, uh, I don't know. And weren't we sitting in here the other day talking about the man that was here on this project that moved on to the next one? That was what I was trying to say. That, that saddens me too, because if somebody like me, he doesn't know what the left hand is doing, cause now you got new boots on. And I get tarrels out and then that was unforeseen.
That's, that's.
I'm not holding that responsible. We had two or three guys that are just like Mr. Reyes that have gone in and out and it's like, where did we pick up? Where did he leave off? Where did, you know?
Sure. And that, that, that is on us to make sure we've got that coordinated. Larry, older guy, he was a part-time preacher. He says basically he's gonna spend, dedicate more time doing that. That's all great. And I, I, I appreciate that if that's what he's actually doing. I think a lot of it was the stress that, um, this job out here has that, it's a lot of challenges. We cannot, we have the worst time getting answers. So much so that the, basically where you guys want to add that door in the weight room. Architect said, well, you guys just designed something. So that's what we're doing. It's that kind of thing.
They just have to stamp on that and just let y'all just design something?
So what that typically, it's their, their, their stamp, right? What we're doing is we're adding a wall and then putting a pair of doors in it.
I don't think any of y'all did it, but when it comes to something like that, you know, when they're, they're so particular about everything, about, you know, I, that it's normally, oh, they're gonna overbuild. Cause they don't want the liability back on that. But I just can't imagine some y'all throw something in there.
And I don't know how all that transpired because I wasn't a part of that. That was more tarrel and no test. But I know that I was out here last week with the drywaller, the glass man and the mason laying it out, out there in the, on the, in the weight room. And my book of plans.
Well, I just know that we've had a whole lot of these little bits.
I don't disagree.
And they're costly.
Yes, and they were before. They were on the act shop, if you recall. There was a lot of changes out there. A lot of information that wasn't on the plans. That's why.
We can, we can come to us.
Okay.
She just care of all that.
That's why the contingencies are where they are. Cause I said, hey, we need to make sure that we cover this project so that we're not back here asking you guys, okay, this is all we had in the budget, but it's over by however many dollars.
So the new bid that you think you bid, are you willing to share like this, just a ballpark figure?
I think there's about, I think there's about ten thousand feet roughly in that roof area. And he said, well, there's not a whole bunch of stuff in the way. It's about four fifty a foot. I don't know what you probably pay for spray foam, fireproofing or insulation, I mean. I think it's gonna cost a hair more than that because there's a bunch of stuff hanging in there, walls are built, that kind of stuff, so we have to move around in there. And I've not vetted this guy out to see his actual bid because he, he just shot me a ballpark, not even looking at the plan. I just gave him some information, told him it's four point two feet, it's about ten thousand feet.
That makes you rep your.
That's what I'm saying. I am not in bed.
Where'd you go?
I don't know.
He's out of Apple.
Thermodynamics, they're fantastic.
I didn't get a name.
You might get thermal, uh, thermodynamics. I've got a contact.
Okay, perfect. This guy's name was David.
This guy's name is Matt. If I can get his phone number, he's thermodynamics and Apple, he's great.
I don't have a problem calling. Anyway, I think based off of that, that's half the cost. And he can get to it quicker.
I mean, obviously it's a no brainer. If you're close to the same student, you know, that's, makes sense. I mean, but what I want to see is that this is half the can. We're going through the, this list of things and what's the next phase? Where we gonna be at? We have that. Have we thought this through? And not have another something where we get an email saying, hey, we, we didn't, we missed this.
I can tell you this, there's gonna be changes on that civil side.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not talking about changes. I'm talking about things that need to be.
Yeah.
To build. You know what I'm saying? You know what I'm getting at. I'm talking about line items as far as this is where we're supposed to be. This is the next thing phase we're building. Have we ordered those things? Do we have a contractor for those tasks?
Yeah. I, I can't say that I know of anything right now, but.
That's not to say that something can come up.
It's certainly.
We, we talked about.
That's right. But we are pretty far along. We're sheetrocking in there right now. We're painting in there right now. Glasses is going in.
I've had a while to think about this. And one of the questions that's been burning my brain, let's say this had not been missed. Are these prices saying they would end if they didn't caught the first time around? If you follow what I'm saying?
Probably not.
You're saying it's a price correctly?
Well, what I'm saying is if they had caught it, how much would it have cost?
If you're part of the bid originally, you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Is it more?
Is this, are these estimates more? And probably so because of the.
I'm gonna think they probably are.
Yes.
I don't know what his price works out. If four fifty is a real number, like the guy quoted me, then the, this number here is nine bucks. So yes, it's more.
Well, and I, I guess the point, what I'm trying to say is if they had been caught the first time around and bid for by whatever this company is. And, and the reason why that's pertinent to us is because I've recently discovered that the furniture was valued engineer. So that's no longer a budget. So we're gonna have to find that. But so everything saved is gonna help us be able to furnish that building appropriately.
Yeah, and I was just glancing through here. There's several codes that have not even been touched.
Yeah. I know that. A figure of just shy of two million dollars, including owner contingency and construction contingency, plus all those line items. So, so we, we've got some cushion there.
Yeah, I don't know what, what they added. They love to scroll through, marking them, I didn't add them up, but, um, you know, there may be a line item that says fifty thousand per whatever it said.
Yeah.
Or maybe three thousand for whatever, but it's not gonna be used. So it can certainly go to furniture. I think there's fifty thousand in there for technology. I don't know what your.
Are all the roof penetrations done in that area? Have they already been made, your penetrations?
Through that roof.
It's gonna bury the handles later.
I don't know that they are. Didn't see, there's no, I looked at that today and this side is I was talking to the guy on the phone, because he was asking me the same thing. I said, there's no penetrations on this side. So I'm gonna guess that they have not been made, but they would be made before you get here.
Yes, of course. That's what I was gonna say.
Right.
That needs to.
Right, so it can be phoned around.
So, I mean, to me, I feel like what would be really cool with y'all, if this has been a less than pleasurable thing with this companies, there's a builder, the ag builders in here. I think the way to stick it to them and kind of make us feel good is if we can save as much. You know, you shopping this stuff as much as we can with a percentage is less.
Yes, we are not.
I would love for you to make that a priority.
We're not gonna spend all the money that's in this budget.
Yeah.
There's just, there's so much dollars in there. And we need. Dollars in there. And when you get thinking about it, if that's being some of this on furniture, that shouldn't be in their calculation. Cause that wasn't part of the construction cost.
We need to finish that where they're not getting fifteen percent or whatever. I don't know what their percentage is, but they're not getting to that if we furnish that thing with bill stuff.
Yeah, or all we really need to do is we can track that budget. This is how much is going to the furniture.
I'm fine with saying sixty, just if there's. If there's gonna be, you know, walls and things, I mean, and, and obviously this, we need to know that this guy's legitimate.
And send me that information to two, four league, the other guy. Be great because I'll send these people.
Yeah, if it's thermal, neither a big guy, it's them, then I know it'll be great.
I heard him say sixty and what did you say fifty?
I mean, I don't know, dog. I'm not getting this.
Well, I mean, I feel like you can't, can't even. Four fifty a square foot.
I think he needs to look at it and e- even if you said the ninety-eight thousand. We know, or I feel relatively sure that it's gonna be less than that anyway. And maybe with your help, this other guy, you know, we'll have at least two numbers to compare aside from the one that we already have. Um, you're only gonna spend what, whatever it costs in the end, whoever does it. And, and that money's already in the budget.
Right, I'm reaching like an amount we can say he was giving up too, so.
If I was gonna jump out there with Liam, I'd say, say it's seventy-five and whatever it is that you pay. If it comes out, it's over seventy-five, then we sitting here again talking.
I said, I've been saying, is that the motion we want?
Well, like you said, it's gonna be what it is.
No.
No.
I'll make the motion say that.
My second plan, all those in favor? Thank you.
Yes, so. That's all I'm gonna say, but I won't remember that one.
I, I think there gets tough with whoever we decided on.
Yes, the, the housing, I've been aware by a local real estate agent that there is a house for sale right now. And if we were to make an offer of a hundred and ten thousand dollars, seller would, would accept. And, um, you know, I, I, I think that it'd be good to have more district housing. Now, I know that the catch, I spoke with Miss Thorpe about this in the quarter the other day. We've got one city across the street that isn't right now. Like, the houses for sale, y'all probably know what I'm talking about, but I'm gonna say, it's definitely one that I think we, we could use as a district. And beyond that, beyond just the purchase of a home, I wanted to begin a discussion about the pricing that we have listed for rental of our homes. And I think that one of the reasons why that is not leased is because of the price. And we're wanting to use these district owned homes as a recruitment and retention group. I've reached out to several superintendents in the area and kinda got an average. And just gonna say what they told me and let y'all discuss this. Uh, I know that up in Benjamin, I know Oakland Pancreek, over in Rotan, spoken to Casey Adams, what he'd like to do if he had them. They're charging around five hundred a month and the district covering the bills. And they're using it as a way to get those through them. And I can just tell you, the other day Christina Gaspar and I sat down, we interviewed, uh, Brandon Benton for the high school math position. And I'm keeping my fingers crossed so we can get this guy. He's applied, his wife is gonna be a certified English teacher for us so she could replace, uh, Ms. Wiley when she was a counselor. Looking at his track record where he's been in Forest Bird, he's, he's, he's an effective educator.
Your man was you?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am.
Oh, yeah.
I, I talked to some of my throwers just today on the way home and they're so pleased to have him. He being. And he's making an impact. And some of those boys were scared death to breathe wrong. They're military and he, he runs a tight ship. But, um, I just, whenever we talked to him, he said housing's gonna be a concern. He asked, do we have any? I said, we do. We have a single five right across the street, brand new. He asked what rent was and I said seven fifty. And he goes, are y'all paying bills? I said, no, sir. He said, I don't think we could, we could justify that. And, you know, I'm not saying that that could be used as leverage, but it kinda goes in.
Yeah, my concern is, is our, our housing that we have, this one, and if we do procure another one. I mean, that's probably, that's why I think we need them. And those kind of situations where it's like.
When we, when we discussed this previously, I believe it was the summer we voted on, on, or y'all voted on pricing. And the hierarchy of who had access to, it was supposed to be seven fifty a month and the superintendent, principals, coaches and teachers. We did have, uh, an elementary first grade teacher move in for a short while, but that did not work out. And, um, I'd love to be able to use this. We're in the position, we're trying to hire an athletic director. If we could use that as a recruitment tool. If we can use it for this math teacher, I think, I think it'd be worth it. And, and the way I kinda look at it, I understand, we don't. I think what was said during that last meeting was we don't wanna lose, lose out on this. But the way that I've got to remind you to think about this is it's not, it's not a money-making endeavor. It's a teacher recruiting endeavor.
Well, I, I think you could be, but here's where I'm. That property, I am a hundred percent for, um, making an offer and I think it's important, I like owning the asset and I think what you could do with it is if you're able to, um, you know, pay an athletic director, you know, has some kids or whatever, brings people here. And charge it or give them a good salary.
Mm-hmm.
Um, to where their retirement's good, but in charge of eighty hundred dollars a month for that house. And you're gonna make back eighteen thousand dollars. If you pay eighty-five and make back eighteen, that's a pretty good deal. It's a tax write-off and then your retirement looks good and you got an. Now, this one over here, that's, I mean, this is, we're talking about four two.
You're right.
You're right. I'm not gonna pay, uh, fifteen hundred, a thousand dollars. I don't know, man, I don't, it's nice. I don't mean that, that makes sense. That's a four bedroom, two bedroom house, good proximity. The other side of that, I feel like I didn't ever work, probably not there. That's good proximity, you can ride a golf cart, but you pay somebody a high salary. And then you make your money back charging them rent that they write off on taxes. So to me, it is a money-making deal to where you can make it fit. You can make some money back. And their retirement looks good. They got tax write-offs. So they can win for everybody. I mean, that's just me.
And the last thing I want us to be in the vibe of, somebody, we wanna hire this person, but they can't find a place to live. And that's, that's.
Are we gonna start buying more than one house? Or we, I mean.
I, I would have to pull those, the house, the shields you're living in, build house.
That, that's what I'm getting at because here's what I, I don't think it's a bad idea, you know, a- as far as his home. But also we're getting, just like we're sitting in here talking about twelve dollars, you know, we gotta pay a man. You know, we'll get sent here with this down, different thing. I just personally, I'd kinda like say as finish get the school and stuff. Let's, we're trying to pay our teachers all that we can pay them and stuff. But if we start getting into the houses business and stuff, I mean, I, I've got a lot of rental property and I've dealt with it for years and stuff. And we're not trying to make any money, but we're gonna have all kinds of repairs and different channels and things like this. Man, is someone's gonna come when that house is on the market?
Okay, but the difference is this, this is, and I get you. Cause I'll tell you right now, this house has been sold like ten times already. I've already, exactly. And I've already told them straight up, if the school doesn't buy it, I'll give you a cash offer for it. But I would rather the school have it for the simple fact that we can raise someone's salary and then make money back on the backside getting the rent. Rather than an individual making rent, because then we can't justify paying somebody eighty-five thousand dollars a year if the school's getting zero dollars.
Well, first of all, then we have a hundred and ten thousand dollars extra in the budget.
To just go pay.
Just to go pay for our house.
And.
Well, what, and but we would be better off with you buying the house and that's the one our lease on.
That's what I'm saying.
Or something.
The short answer is yes, we have to make that happen. But the long answer is, is it physically responsive? That's why I brought it to y'all.
Yeah, that's, that's where I follow in on that.
It makes no difference. I can totally follow that, but I just, you know, that could make somebody else's salary, they can, if their retirement.
Do they understand that though? Are they, you could explain.
What's like that's the next teacher or the next teacher, somebody that's gonna say, you know, can y'all do that for me?
Well, no, no, it's, it's only, cause here's the deal, here's the way I see it. I think you have to have that price for a teacher whose salary is obviously less. You know, just, I'm saying, just like a teacher, not an administrator or an athletic director, somebody that's in a, a higher paid position. You have to have that set five hundred dollars a month, whatever, and, and offer that to them. I'm saying the one, if you raise somebody's salary where we have some people's pay already, that's pretty high, eighty, eighty-five, somewhere in there. And then you can turn around and charge them twelve, eight hundred dollars a month, you get that back. See, that doesn't help either. That doesn't help their retirement. Yo, yeah, cause that's something.
I'm fine with us doing it, but I think you can screw yourself around whenever you get the district to cover the bill. Cause you can put an error on fifty-five and run it at eight hundred, two thousand.
So you could say, you could give them a lot, as you say, they kept it, we kept it. The water leak that you neglected, you're covered.
If you cover a good point, but anything above.
I also think that there were four or five people that were really upset about this over here that wanted a shot at this house. And then it was like, I know we said, and talked about that, like we can wait around, kill somebody that would really need to hire or something. Yeah, and, uh, I realize it's unfair, but there's people that are here right now that would like to rent it. And if we lease that to somebody right now, that's in a teacher right now, you're gonna have to trade their life.
That are any.
There's some big teachers that ask to rent the house.
They've come and asked, but I think what's heard them is whenever we talk to them about.
Yeah, but just not teachers, so.
Yeah. I have not opened it to the public.
What about the math teachers? Are they seeing if they, if they actually have?
I believe so.
Because I mean, that's our first front. We didn't, we didn't have math teachers in three years. I don't care what we just said on her head about that house. We gotta take.
That's too much house for.
Don't think on how many kids they got.
That would be a problematic situation.
On that, that house across the street, say the math teacher, if whatever you're gonna pay him, you know where I'm going. I said it before. If, if they just paid insurance on it, then, which they're older, they're gonna take care of it. But to me, when you have to pay something, you're gonna take better care of something. I don't care. I'm like you. We're not, we're not in the money-making business. We need to get. But I also know if I'm paying for something, I do take better care of it.
Well, you, you could, you could do a low market rip, rent, and, and you can have them put up a two thousand dollar deposit.
And you gotta make sure if they leave or we want them to leave, that they gotta go.
Two thousand dollar deposit, your, your rent's gonna be five hundred dollars a month. Pay your bills to this threshold.
That's how I mean.
You're gonna take care of it.
With the budget, you have a. We would really have it.
Well, I, I'd have to bring y'all hard numbers to verify, but yes.
Can you, you want to come up with mine where you want these teachers to go?
Well, yeah, Brittany and I have been starting to work on that and I'm all over the map on it.
Yeah, in order to compete with the other school.
What I'm, what I'm proposing, I'll just tell y'all this right here. What I'm proposing is to cut a lot of the stipends that have been handed out. And roll that back into step rates. Because when folks come and apply for our job, I've spoken to a couple of that potential athletic directors that asked about paying. And they said, what we saw where you posted your pay scale, y'all really on state banks? Yes, sir, we are. And, you know, there's a pause there. That, that's hard. I mean, you're looking at a first year college graduate coming to work here for thirty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty. If I could take, most of our teachers are, are getting some kind of stipend that we could, we could cut those and find the average and roll it back into salary. I think it's gonna be better for us to advertise out there where our salaries are. It's not necessarily gonna impact their bottom line immediately. But the other benefit of this, and the scary part, is that steps go up every year. Stipends do not. So what I've gotta be very smart about is if we roll this into step rates, is it sustainable in the long haul? But right now, it's in great shape. But a school would go around acting like we can spend a million bucks a year or more and it'd be sustainable forever.
Listen, nevermind too. I mean, you, you've got good teachers, you know, I mean, it, it's a double-edged thing. Good teachers that stay a long time salary, you have to pay them.
Yes.
But usually they're worth it because they've got experience and, you know what I'm saying? It's the ones that are brand new that don't hunt very much, they haven't had several years where they're experiencing.
Well, when, when you look at like Seymour up the road, they're a two A school. They're able to pay considerably more than we are. Only, they're able to pay more than we are. Even Woodson's paying, I think, fifteen hundred a month. I'm trying to put us in a, in a position that they can't catch us. They're not fortunate like we are with, with, with the wooden mill money and the finances that we have. But I've got to make sure, that's why I'm not presenting this to y'all tonight, but I will tell you, that is the number one priority for Brittany and I is to come up with a plan that's gonna be sustainable. That's gonna put us in a competitive life. Cause we're just not right now. So if we may, we do, is this what I wanna do to end up with that? If we can get the scholarship to work out, there's a lot of things that we could do. That's huge to our district that Woodson will never get. And nothing against, listen, loving to death, but I'm tired of losing kids to them. And I'd like to see some of them come back if we did, so. Well, and, and I, the longer I'm in this position, the more that I look at it from the light of, I think that the stipends were created to obviously make us more competitive. Cause if you don't have that, then, I mean, you're telling that's somebody's bottom line. People don't work for free. So you're telling me y'all went from above base? Okay, so what y'all did is when they raised base, y'all didn't just rate with them, is what I'm trying to say. Or when the state gave whatever.
Took away the fifteen hundred. What we're gonna do.
Well, I mean, we've got, we've got some stipends and we'll talk about this a later date, but we got some stipends that really don't make any sense.
That's the, I mean, debate of that teacher ties priority and then.
Yeah, no doubt. And what we have more than anything, more than just not making sense, we have inequity. I shouldn't pay her six thousand dollars to do the same thing. This was gonna only pay her a thousand. That, that's a no-no. And I'm talking about stipends. That, that's a problem that we have. And I'm trying to get everything equitable on the same playing field. There's gonna be some hurt feelings, cause there's some folks that I can't roll all their stipends in step rates. It's not feasible. They're gonna probably see a little bit of a cut, but, you know, at the end of the day. They're gonna probably see a little bit of a cut, but, you know, at the end of the day.
Okay, so back to the.
One other thing I would say that nobody has said yet about, it's not a, it's not a forever thing, you buy the house, the school buys the house. And maybe we're in a different situation in a few years, and you, I mean. It's not gonna. Let me tell you this, but here's what I, I got a, I've got a video on my phone that that they sent me. And anybody that wants to look at it, if you want, it's like this little virtual tour, uh, it's totally renovated, I've never been in the house. I have no problem with what you said, I just feel like this way more benefit as far as leveraging that, than I could, I mean, I could monetarily benefit from it. But that's, I mean, or another option would be if you don't have, or I would do private participation, I could buy it, and it'd be like a note. Pay me percent, but what would be smarter is if we have money as CDs, you go borrow against a CD, you pay two percent over what you can CDs make it, so.
We have the the building CDs. It has to be defined by our fund.
And y'all will see in March, and you see every month, that financial breakdown, the interest alone, on the operating budget. Just from August to now, you made enough interest to buy that house.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, but even if you didn't want to touch it, you could go take that alone.
Oh, the interest off the bond?
So the bond interest is subject to arbitrage, and you guys will learn more about this when we bring those folks in. There's, let's say that we we had a hundred thousand dollars, and it's set in the bank, thirty-five percent, that's gonna be, that's gonna be six thousand dollars, right? Well, arbitrage states, and this came in in nineteen eighty-nine, because there was. So you have to meet certain benchmarks in order to have access to all the interests. So far, we met benchmarks, I'm gonna get a more precise, uh, analysis of where we are. But, uh, what that might be used for is capital improvement, capital. No, you can build like, like the parking thing that I presented you got, you can do those sort of improvements, but like she said, you can't buy furniture.
When we get ready to our track, we do that.
I would assume so, but I'd have to really look and make certain of this. In any event, I think, I think what what he said, I mean, this is y'all, I think that's, that's not a bad idea, because if we can borrow and leverage, we don't have to spend our own minutes. But.
Cash money on in the budget, just lose cash money and go pay hundred and ten thousand or anything.
It's not in the budget, we didn't budget for this.
In operating, yes.
And we should need to put that in there, by the way. This is, this is on the tax roll for sixty-six, which I can get the tax of, uh, Chase only incident over to. Oh, it's right there, cool. So it's on a tax roll for sixty-two, no, sixty-six, seven, seventy. Okay? If you pay one ten, we would need to work something with the cash deal here, but we don't slow this.
You purchased a house, do it, if they, if they don't want.
I mean, we could all for the life.
But asking the price is one twenty-five.
Uh, well, I don't, I think that we really need any concession that much. Hi Kelly.
We're gonna have to talk calendar real quick.
Sure.
And then we can, okay. So the twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar. Week option as well is very similar, in fact, it's a clone of our current calendar. Um, this is, this is y'all's decision to make, I just know that, I was very pleased with the way the town hall meetings were. I thought that there was a lot of good, um, you know, dialogue that occurred after that. Uh, you know, I spoke with Mr. Barrington, I know that a lot of the questions he had written down in his pad, they were answered by either myself or when Woodson spoke. Uh, I think that the reason I brought it in here tonight is there's a lot of folks that are really excited to see what we're gonna do. And also, it will certainly help with the rest of the planning efforts that we're going into next year, to know which direction we're going.
And, uh, I would, there's probably not, there was probably not a bigger opponent of the four-day than me. Until I went to the meeting and listened to Dr. Menz and the folks talk, and then everything that I thought was negative, was not. Was not a negative, you know, about, but, you know, the kitchen span, longer periods, uh, you know, everything, everything. Made sense when they explained it, uh, and the fact that you go to six four minutes on a four-day than a five per year. And and got more minutes before the star test, anyway, it's just, it is. And and I just, I just came away from it with a whole different point of view, and and like, this sounds like a a good deal to me, so.
I don't know if it makes any difference, but I had that QR code at the end. I thought I'd, I thought I'd get something, the only response was my test, nobody else was on it there, so, and I.
I started asking parents, because the first meeting, there was just a handful, it really upset me, that we're the first ones they barked at. You know, and yourself, then, so I started asking parents, what'd you thought? What, I had one that said, no, but we're probably gonna be here next year anyway, so it didn't matter. Everybody else was for it.
Well, they're gonna have to drive all the way to a four-day week. To me, I have a lot of schools west of us that are going that way too, it's, it's really taken over. Well, before you do, I just want to go through a few things, I'm sorry to hold the meeting up, but I want to make sure y'all are aware of a few things. The first day of professional development for our staff would be June, July twenty-ninth. We'll have five straight days of PD, try to open house on that Friday, then we're gonna have our first day of. That's kind of my thoughts, either Thursday night, I don't know, I kind of get those teachers the next day to put stuff away, but, um. There there are a few things that we need to look at, just so you guys will understand the direction we're going. I strategically placed professional development dates throughout the calendar, Sep- uh, September's is really just placed there. I wanted to make sure I had a PD day in most months. If you look in October, it's it's at the end of a grading period, that gives teachers a chance to finalize grades, have the parent conferences. Get prepared for the next grading period, which begins on October seventh. Also, if you look at October fourteenth, it's a federal holiday, that particular week, we're gonna be going Monday through Friday. Our football schedule has been created. Tuesday through Friday, yeah, sorry, sorry. Our football schedule has been created, so any anytime in the fall semester, when you see a pure five-day week, it's because of the fact that we have a football game that Friday. I want to make sure we maintain that, we have pep rallies on the game day instead of the before, I didn't want to get into all that, and that's. If you look down at, uh, Thanksgiving break, it's gonna be the same setup as we have currently, it just shows to be a four-day hol- holiday, obviously, the night here on Fridays. Christmas break's coming late, there are no half-days on this calendar at all, I've seen that our attendance rates are awful on half-days, so we're gonna cut them out completely. Um, going down a little bit further, if you look, yeah, uh, the month of March. Leading up into our star season, I provided two solid five-day weeks, that last little bit of push right before we go into star test. Get those kids as much preparation as we can, that's how we were able to build in more minutes leading up to star than we had on the traditional five-day calendar. And then toward the end of the year, you see that our last day of school will be May twenty-second, that is also going to be graduation day. And it, the only, the only thing that I can say that that hinders sometimes, our folks that want to come from out of town to mount work. But we have an entire year to let them know graduation's gonna be, but they ought to be able to be prepared. May twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. I've given you all the statistics, the largest change we're making, if you look under grade grading periods. We are gonna convert from a six-week grading period to a nine-week grading period. The benefit of that, there are less opportunities for students to lose eligibility to do the mail. Another benefit, this more closely resembles the college schedule. When midterms occur, it'll be about the time that the first nine-week grading period's ending, and the third nine-week grade grading period ends. So we're trying to make an effort to make sure that our academic calendar matches with what those little credit kids are doing. Plus helps those who are involved in a UIL competition. Another small added benefit, a lot of times as a teacher, that third six weeks, which falls from, you know, October, November, December. But really, it's just November, December, there's a holiday at Thanksgiving right in the way, you never feel like the third six weeks gets going. So this kind of eliminates that. So that's just, just a couple of the small things I wanted to point out to you guys.
And the bank, that is.
Yes, sir.
That's in case we need a.
And and really, the benefit of the four-day week, if we get to the point where we've used more than five point two seven. That, uh, eight days worth of minutes due to closure, we can just convert a Friday off to a school. So there shouldn't be any more encroachment upon the summer than what we've already experienced extending the year by. So, I don't know if y'all want to ask any questions about it, but I haven't pointed out.
Your teachers, all hundred percent, I'm sure.
Yes, well, I mean, if they have any, if there was anybody that wasn't before, they didn't need more of that. We met as a staff right here in the library, and they were very on board, but, oh, sorry, Brittany wanted a Wednesday off, you know.